Okay, we'll call the ZBA meeting to order. And do the flag of allegiance, the flag was moved. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with no end. Hey, did everybody have time to review the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any correction?
None.
There's only one that I hadn't thought later on. The name of the law firm is Jacobowitz and Google. Because it's misspelled on. So anybody want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll move to accept the minutes with the correct spelling of Representative Lawson.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All in favor, unanimous. Okay, there was some correspondence. All of it pertaining to Mr. Wiggers' application.
Yeah, the first thing is the 239 response from the county. And I forwarded you the video.
Yes.
Copyright, you got that, right? So the recommendation from the county is local determination, so that's leaving it up to us.
The other thing is another letter submitted by Mr. Wiggers in addition to his submission. It was from a Stanley boater with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. He's a qualified timber rattlesnake surveyor, senior projects manager. And he is stating in this letter that there's no dens on this particular site. But there's another Department of Environmental Conservation saying that the, I think I forwarded this one to you guys, that if it's within a mile and a half, you know, there's still concerns with issues because I guess they're wide ranging in their foraging and whatnot, so. But what I gleaned from the letter was that it doesn't make the property off limits. Thanks, so. I mean, you guys can take that for what's worth it, that's what I got out of that letter. And there was one more letter, an email from the planning board, the referral that was required on this matter. That I forwarded you guys, or you guys got also right, and you were able to do that.
Yes.
And the planning board voted unanimously in favor of this project. And just today at around five o'clock, we got a letter from Jacobowitz and Google. And just reading through this, the letter, you want to take a look at it, it basically reiterates a lot of what was said by Mr. Capello at the public hearing.
I think it's good to review it.
Okay, sure. It's two sided. And do we, I'll read it out loud, say my mic, if you want.
If you want, you can.
Okay. So this is via email, over to zba@tustin.org. Regarding Eagles Nest the State's application, file number is given. Dear Chairman Lutkowski and Board members, this office represents property owners and residents in the immediate vicinity of the subject Eagles Nest the State's property. Our clients are very concerned about the potential of a variance that could allow construction of a house on this undersized lot. Twenty-four neighbors object to this application. Particularly given the unique characteristics of this neighborhood. And the emphasis in the town zoning code and comprehensive plan on maintaining those characteristics. The requested variance will create an undesirable change as a character of this neighborhood. And a detriment to nearby properties is substantial. It will have an adverse impact on physical and environmental conditions in the neighborhood. And the need for the requested variance is self-created. Therefore, the requested variance should be denied. And the applicant's ZBA application states that the applicant applied for a variance of the road frontage requirement. However, if the applicant also requires a lot with variance, then the board lacks authority to grant a variance that was not applied for. The 2007 Town Comprehensive Plan specifically calls out the 300-foot minimum lot with requirement and the importance of maintaining that requirement. It is unusual for a comprehensive plan to refer to specific bulk requirements. Emphasizing the importance of 300-foot with requirement. The Comprehensive Plan refers to the two special districts that were created to preserve the beauty and resources of the Upper Delaware River area and the properties in that area. The Comprehensive Plan states, quote, "Minimum lot size area is five acres and the road frontage is required to be 300 feet at minimum," emphasis added. These requirements ensure stability and property values to help combat any sprawl in the coming years." Close quote. The draft 2021 Comprehensive Plan also refers to the special zoning districts which help ensure the preservation of defining qualities of the Upper Delaware River. The Town Zoning Code requires that the SR District, Scenic River District, is intended to complement the Upper Delaware and Scenic Recreational River, the USDRR corridor, as defined and designated as a scenic segment of the river. This district is further intended to preserve the scenic character of the corridor, which is presently undeveloped. Although some parcels in the SR District have less than 300 feet of lot width or road frontage, those parcels predate the 300-foot requirement. The existence of such lawful, non-conforming parcels does not provide the basis to grant the requested variance. Granting this variance will set a precedent which will negate the comprehensive plans and the zoning codes 300-foot requirement and effectively reverse the lot width and such requirements for the SR District. Serious questions remain concerning the information submitted to the board by the applicant. That stated that the public hearing, the applicant's environmental assessment form, EAF, submitted for that hearing falsely states that the site does not contain any species or associated habitats listed as threatened or endangered and is not located in the 100-year flood plain. EAF mapper states that the project site does contain endangered or threatened species of associate or associated habitat and specifically lists the bald eagle. All residents of the area are aware this area is bald eagle habitat and that a bald eagle's nest is located in the immediate vicinity of the applicant's property. Bald eagles and their nests are protected by federal and state law. The taking of bald eagles, which includes but is not limited to actions that may harass, harm, worry, or disturb bald eagles violate state law, which sets forth specific measures to avoid the unlawful taking of bald eagles or their habitat. The applicant has not demonstrated compliance with those measures or criteria. The Form NYSDC Letter Regarding Bald Eagles is attached. We request that this application be referred to the Conservation Advisory Commission, which is intended to take recommendations to the towns' boards on issues raised here. Which is intended to make recommendations to the towns' boards on issues raised here. The proposed house location on a ridge violates the intent of the Town Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Code as stated above. In addition, the clearing and grading of the property directly relates to the impact of the environment and the neighborhood. And the applicant has not submitted a grading and drainage plan as required by the Town Zoning Code. Section 11.5.2 states that each application to the ZBA shall contain a complete site development plan in accordance with the requirements set forth in Article 8. Should be, yeah, Article 13 should be Article 8, Article 8. 8, Section 8.3.3 requires that the site development plan include a grading and drainage plan showing existing and proposed contours. Section 11.5.2 also requires submission through the ZBA of a narrative description of the proposed project as Section 8.3.3 sets forth many site plan element requirements that are not met by this application. In absence of the required information, the board cannot make a reasonable determination on this application. However, even in the absence of that information, it is clear that, given the physical and environmental conditions in this particular neighborhood, the requested variance will cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and a determinant to nearby properties and will have an adverse effect on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood. There are already two houses on the applicant's property, so the applicant has no need for the benefit of a variance. In addition, the requested variance, which is almost a 20% variance, is substantial and the applicant's difficulty in complying with the law is self-created because the applicant was aware of the 300-foot requirement, yet seek to subdivide the property despite that requirement. Based on the above and the comments previously presented to the board, this variance application should be denied. Very truly yours, J. Benjamin Galey. And there's been attachment from of New York State, DUC. From Lisa Mason.
What's from Lisa Mason, the same as what?
It's a standard.
Oh, okay, so that's the same as what was in the email that she sent.
Yeah.
No, I think the email you got is drawn to the rattlesnakes, isn't it?
Well, both.
Okay, but that's a site-specific response.
This is.
That is. What's attached to Mr. Galey's letter is a, is just a, as he says in the, on the second page of the letter, the Form New York State DUC Letters Regarding Bald Eagles is attached. I mean, it's relevant information, but it's generic information, it's not site-specific.
Where is the?
Where, what you have received from her directly is site-specific, as I understand.
Were you able to make up the digital version of this? No?
It's little.
It's little?
It was little, yes.
I didn't bring that here.
You can see the, I can make out the I guess the buffer area where the buffer area ends.
Right.
Mark that's kind of drawn across.
That's the buffer.
From where the?
Nest.
In the the other slope. This is 5%, 5% range. And this is the plug. 657 foot base blood elevation.
What about the well and the septic system, et cetera? Where would? Well, I mean, this says just dwelling, so where would the other, is that a concern for us?
Well, that could still be moved. I mean, I mean, you, you, Mr. Wiggers, the house location is not
I'm sorry, I changed.
The proposed house location is not definite yet, right? It could be.
No, that's basically where we're going to go.
Or higher. Or higher.
Might be higher, further from the road.
Right.
Yeah.
And even here, within like this area here, according to Ms. Nasty, that doesn't put this area off limits. Only during certain times of the year.
Right, that was the way I understood it too.
Which is most of the year, but.
Yeah, like, like very small window.
Right. But there does appear to be enough area to put a house in with utilities that would not come even close to the 600. 660?
660.
Right. Right.
And this would be, this has to be how many?
It can't be no more than 50 feet, something.
Can't be closer than 50 feet.
There can be any place beyond.
Being in the 50.
All the way back. Right, right. Here, alongside, sideline, right.
Right, and, okay.
Now, the most likely place to go well is going to be in line with this one, and then the septic would be down in this area. And this is the 644-foot elevation across the property. So anything above this line is above.
That's the top of the river then, okay.
Right, so anything, well, yeah, so anything above this line here is technically out of the flood plain. Because the base blood elevation is 657 feet. 640. Oh, here, I was reading this.
Yeah, so that's a little bit higher than the
Right.
This is what you just read?
That's what he just read. Which, like we discussed in the last meeting, the flood plain issue was really not a factor because you're not building. Correct. But claim floodways not an issue as long as whoever ends up owning this property understands and realizes they can't put anything permanent down there.
You can impose that requirement as a condition of them. If you're required to grant the food, you can impose that as a condition.
Right. Well, there are standards concerning the floodplain. True, there are. And so that timber rattled again is somewhere within a mile and a half.
A mile and a half of this, just parcel.
I don't know if it's, if they took into both into account, I don't think that's really critical.
Right.
That it's still something that needs to be looked at when, when, when any construction occurs, they want to minimize any take of the, any, anything that's traveling through there, you know.
Right.
So I guess, you know, they would, the DUC would have to go in there and look and see if there's any signs that would trigger them to say, okay, well, we might have rattlesnakes moving through there.
Well, logically, you would think that construction would most likely be spring, summer. Something like that, and yet she says that's when the snakes are the most active.
Correct.
You know.
Typically, when at the construction site where there are, is the possibility of timber rattlesnakes is that the developer hires someone each day to go through and clear, and they do that on the pipelines. To see if they're ready around, right? Why do you do that?
Very careful.
They have protective birthing and long poles and
Not a job, are we?
No, no. So does anybody have any questions concerning the site plan to Mr. Wiggers or?
I do not, no.
I think he's answered, I'm sorry, Pat, you have any questions concerning this site plan?
Did we? We don't need to address the erosion issue. This is the notes that I wrote the last time. That was the only one.
The erosion issue being what someone brought up regarding?
Some, yeah, somebody, one of the speakers last time wrote, brought it up.
About runoff?
About what?
They were talking about runoff?
I, I believe so.
But they were talking about that in conjunction to, I believe it was a driveway that went up to one of the lots on Eagles Nest the States that I think was off of Hankins Road, and there was a considerable amount of erosion from that.
Okay.
Because they probably didn't ditch it or pipe it correctly, right?
That's Mr. Edelson. Yes, but he has no, no basically records of it. He is the one who did his basically property and drained to the river, and he's talking about ours. I don't think we had problem because we addressed everything.
All engineered.
All engineered.
Army Corps of Engineers.
Yes.
Regular engineers, and my engineer.
You're talking about the road.
Eagles Nest.
The roadway.
Yeah.
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 He's talking about the runoff on Eagles Nest, going down the property, which is untrue.
No.
Because Colbert all went across Eagles Nest to go back to the wetland, which is part of Gracie Swamp Creek.
And he didn't slope this listed on here, new, right?
5%. They're talking about, you know, simple project there, it's a, it's a single family house, it's not a a multi-house, you know, bit of project.
Well, they still have to comply with all the building codes.
Correct. Absolutely.
And get permits.
Correct. And get C1. Do you have anything else to add?
No, that was the only
Okay, so let's run down the criteria here. So we, so we can get a consensus of where we're heading right there. No, the first criteria is would the benefit to the applicant be greater than any adverse effects to the neighborhood?
It's a balancing test, a balance of the benefit of the applicant with the loss of the detriment to the neighborhood.
Well, I heard 24 well everyone that was in this room, one of those that were online being quite passionate, well-spoken, non-hysterical concerns about what that additional parcel and home would potentially do to the care for the neighborhood. I heard a great respect for the history of the families that have settled on Hankins Road, including those, the grandfather or great-grandfather who jumped off the train and ran across the river and said, this is my, this is where I want to be. So there, there's I heard people who have built a neighborhood there, speaking of concerns about the traffic that has existed on the road in the last several years because of the development, because the number of houses that have been built and because of the rentals of some of those houses to transient families on Airbnb and VRBO platforms. So I believe that there would be a substantial detriment imposed on the residents of the neighborhood and that those concerns totally outweigh the benefit to the Wiggers of being able to subdivide the property. There has been a lot of debate and talk about the size of the lots and the average road frontages being 200 feet. And historically, there has been no subdivision of land on Hankins Road that has not been done according to the subdivision law or regulation. And that's why there are that, the number of those 200-foot wide lots. The Comprehensive Plan does speak eloquently about protecting the nature of that area. And in 2017, the town did vote to increase the lot size with a lot frontage and lot width from 200 feet to 300 feet. And I believe that that would be you know really stepping away from the tradition of that neighborhood of how properties have been developed. It would be contrary to the zoning law and every other subdivision, excuse me, has followed the zoning law in terms of the road frontage and lot width. The other thing, and this is something that I have seen from my work with fire departments, that's a very near old road, 12 feet wide. Our fire engines are eight feet wide. First engine on scene is going to park in the middle of the road so that we have two feet on either side of the engine to get our gear out, get our equipment working. And that is effectively going to block any other emergency vehicle from reaching that scene. And it's going to set up a chain of responders you know, coming in, setting up water supply. And it's going to make it so that we can't even get an ambulance to a scene if needed.
In or out.
Yes, in or out. And I know that this is, well, just one more house, but it is one more opportunity for something bad to go wrong and for that to happen. And from a public safety aspect, I really can't, I, I think that the public safety to the neighborhood far outweighs the benefit to the applicant of allowing a subdivision.
Well, I disagree with John on the second part, Steve, because this project is not going to change that scenario. Right? The road is going to be as wide as it's going to be, all right? You have a lot of other lots that are still buildable, which are smaller than this proposed, well, lot, which we narrow on, so. So this is not going to change that aspect of it, all right? It's still going to be a problem in regard to that. So I don't see how that might bring that argument in changes anything because if that's the way it is there, all right? Granted, there's still plenty of under-valve lots there that could still be built on, and it's still going to exacerbate what you're talking about. exacerbate what you're talking about. And there's nothing you can do about that, all right?
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm just bringing it up as an awareness point. Okay?
Um, no, I mean, at, at first glance, they Wiggers have more to gain than, than the community loses. But by the same token, um, you know, as unfair as it seems, some of those lots were grandfathered in, so they're, you know.
None of the substandard or lots, small frontage lots were grandfathered in. All of those two hundred foot lots were created according to the zoning law, which means that they are legal for forever. There's no way that the.
Well, they're now pre-existing non-conforming lots because they were, they were legally created. A lot that was created before zoning was a legal lot.
Yes.
Since it's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, a lot that was created under then current zonings and now doesn't conform is now a pre-existing non-conform.
Right.
But if it's a, a vacant lot, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a vacant lot and the owner wishes to build, are they able?
Yeah, yeah, as long as they meet the, the, the requirements under our zoning law for, for what you can do on a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Okay.
And for the most part, the one thing that, that the zoning law and, and most of the zoning law deal with is they enable at least some residential development on, on a pre-existing lot. The provisions for, for, for reduction of setbacks if necessary, um, that sort of thing, but the idea is, is not to render the lot totally worthless to the owner.
Right, exactly. And I'm not, you know, not saying that those lots cannot be built up.
Right.
They, you know, they are, as long as they meet setbacks, backyard, front yard and backyard setbacks and can get a well-off subject system in that's, you know, approved by the New York State Department of Health, they're good to go.
Correct, and, uh, and as Mr. Wiggers admitted with the tax map, I mean, uh, it's quite obvious that that's the character of the neighborhood. So this project doesn't change that. I mean, the character of the neighborhood is the, the lots and how they are now. How they were created is, doesn't really mean anything. The character of neighborhoods, you have a lot of lots which are substandard that could be potentially built on. That's the character of the neighborhood. That's what you have to focus on, I think, because, you know, and why what he's doing is not deviating from that.
Well, actually it is because all of those lots were created according to the zoning law that is in, in play at the time.
But that's why he's asking for a variant.
Exactly. Exactly. Can I, can I say something? Sure.
Karen, can you read the letter from the planning, uh?
Yes, well, I, we didn't, they both, we all have it, so it was read.
I mean, if, if you read his letter, I mean, he says, I mean, Chairman of the Planning Board, um, well, I'm sure if you read it, you'll, you'll see that it's not changing the conformity of the, of, of the neighborhood.
That's the point I'm trying to make. That's the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. How that was, that character was created, I don't think is important. All right. It's whether or not this project was going to change that character. And I don't think it will because it's still going to be, uh, granted, one lot, which we asked Mr. Wigger instead of creating two non-conforming lots, we said, let's make one conforming and one non-conforming, all right? And even with that conforming, that non-conforming lot, it's still wider than a lot of the other lots you have. So you're really not changing anything there by, by, uh, allowing it.
Well, we are because we're allowing, uh, a non-conforming, a lot that is not conforming to the zoning to be created. And all of the other lots that are, the two hundred foot lots were created according to the zoning.
Correct.
So that, that is a departure from the norm.
I don't think you're seeing my point, Paul, Steve. My, my point is, is that we're not deviating from the character of the neighborhood, as you said. All right?
In terms of lot width, perhaps not, but in terms of compliance with the zoning law in creating lots according to the zoning law, we certainly are.
Well, then, we, then according to that logic, we would never have a variant.
Well, this is an area variance for a subdivision. Which is different from area variances that you typically hear for setbacks from building lines for a project.
The criteria is the same for an area variance, whether for, for a subdivision or a building project, so. Yeah, I don't know, I don't see where you're going with that either.
It's just, it's a difference. I, I just don't, I, I think that the, the bottom line for me is that we heard from residents on that road who believe that there would be an undesirable change to the community in terms of quality of life on Hankins Road if this variance is granted. And you know, they're the people that live there. They're, that's their lived experience. We don't live there. We don't see it. The planning board doesn't live there. They don't see it. But the people that live there do see it. They do live it. And their testimony was this was going to create an undesirable change to their community.
But I'll play devil's advocate with that thought. If there are of this development, this subdivision area, if there are empty lots or, you know, undeveloped lots that have the potential to be built on, that these same people are not going to have the same luxury of saying it's going to change the character because for the sake of argument, because I don't know how many of these lots are empty, but for the sake of argument, say five of them are undeveloped. If the owners of those particular lots, all they have to do is comply with the building code, the setbacks, et cetera. There's five houses where they're not subdividing anything, but they building five more houses will absolutely change the character of that area.
I agree with you on that point, Pat, and thank you for playing devil's advocate. And the, the, and really, you know, people bought knowing that those lots were there.
Yeah, but they hope that they don't get the vote.
I do believe that, uh, some of the families have bought out a number of them. They just have not combined them into.
That may be.
But they're still buildable.
Absolutely, they're still buildable. Yes, I'm not, I'm not, and that's not a departure from, from the zoning law.
Right.
But this is a departure from the zoning law. That, that's my point. This is a departure from the zoning law that we need to take, you know, consider seriously what the residents of that road, uh, told us at our last meeting. They were passionate about this and it was not hysterical passion. It was, it is heartfelt passion about the love of the community that they have developed there.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
No, not right now. Okay, uh. Do you have anything on, on this criteria, Pat? That's it? Well, I think, uh, I think the benefit to the applicants outweighs the small effects that, uh, another, uh, home being built there would have. Because, uh, my feeling is, like I said, is that if, if one ain't going to be, be built there in, in, in the next year or five or 10 years, you know, there's going to be houses built somewhere else possibly on that road. And there, there, there'll be nothing to stop that. And that's just the way it is as time goes on. I mean, my, my road myself, I had done that road, the only house on that road for thirteen years.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then, uh, two thousand and eight came along and one house after the other one in there. So, you know, did I like it? Not particularly. I liked being in there by myself, but that's the way it, it goes.
Right, but none of those were built on non-conforming lots or lots that were subdivided to be non-conforming to the zoning law. Those were all on the lots, built on lots that were laid out when that subdivision was created.
But the fact of the matter is that you, it's still houses that got built and that, and that's what these people are talking about. They're, they're talking about changing the character of neighborhoods, but they don't want more houses. Well, they may get more houses over time that they can't do nothing about. And so, yeah, you could say, okay, it's one more house. Uh, what's the big deal? Well, there, there really is no big deal because it is just one more house in, in, uh, an area of men, potentially many other houses that could go in there. But so like Pat said, I don't know how many lots have developed in there. You know, I don't think there's a lot of houses down in there on that road right now. But, uh.
Actually, I'm surprised when I drive down that way, how many are there.
Just to fill it back.
Yeah, there. And I understand how they say the character of, of the area. Um, because you, you know, we, we would walk down just so far. And then I didn't realize how much farther until one day we drove down farther and, and there are more houses than I thought there were. But, you know, it's, uh, you know, Stephen's point about safety for, in terms of public safety. God love them, if they want to be on a road that size with some of the houses that they have, they're not hundred thousand dollar houses. They're much more expensive than that and to, but you know what? It's, it's where they want to live and the, the cost and what they want, but.
And, and, uh, that's not going to change.
Right.
All right. And this project is not going to change that. So that's what I had said about that. Anybody else on that, Steve?
I've said my piece.
Okay.
Pat?
Good for that point.
Uh, undesirable change to the neighborhood, character and detriment to nearby properties. I think we covered that priority. Uh, whether the request is substantial. All right, uh, the variances that, uh, he would be, uh, asking for on the, uh, the road frontage would be thirty-three feet point two nine, thirty-three point two nine feet. And the, uh, at the setback, the fifty-foot setback, with a lot with, it would be fifty-two point five three feet. That's what the variance that would be that he's asking for. So, uh, by comparison to, uh, I mean, the, the fifty-two foot, uh, variance would be the greatest. That would be approximately, out of the three hundred, uh, required feet.
Down to two forty-eight, two forty-nine.
That would be, I'm, I'm, I'm looking for the percentage. That would be.
Wow.
Uh-oh, you guys need to get your calculator out.
Yeah, it's like, you know, you really don't want me doing math.
That's why you're.
Fifty-two out of, it's fifty-two out of three hundred, is that what we're talking about?
Well, what the percentage of that?
Yes. Like, if, if I'm doing the math right, it's seventeen point three percent. Why don't you go the other way? Three hundred? Yeah. That's seventeen percent.
So.
Seventeen a fraction.
Right.
You know, and, and these are numbers that, you know, we asked Mr. Wiggers to, to change to. I mean, initially, uh, when he was asking for two non-conforming lots, the, the variant, the number was wrong. He asked him to redraw the map to, to this and that's where it's at. So even that, with that change, um, I think, I don't think that's substantial. Substantial would be half, half that amount, I, in my opinion. All right, there's no, there's nothing written saying what the, uh, the amount should be, all right?
Right.
But I would think that, uh, anything more at or more than half would be substantial. And this is considerably less than that.
Or you, or even it's not even twenty-five percent, so it's.
No, but it is substantial. I mean, it's, it's a large, um, variance to grant. And yes, we did ask the Wiggers to create only one, to propose to create only one non-conforming lot. Um, otherwise, there would have been two non-conforming lots.
Right.
It's the original plan, right?
Right. So, um, you know, I, I, I don't think that, um, you know, that really has any bearing. I think it's a seventeen percent, uh, you know, non-compliance in the, uh, the zoning law.
So in your opinion, you, you think that seventy percent of, uh, the requirement is substantial?
Yes. In this particular situation, because of the, uh, nature of the area, the, um, the sighting of, uh, needing to protect the area in our, um, comprehensive, uh, yes, I do believe it's substantial. It may not be in another area where we don't have that strict of, uh, a description of needing to protect the scenic, uh, or the recreation, the value of, of, uh, that area. But in this, I do believe that it is substantial.
Wha- what's the distance from the river itself to the road? Does it show that on that map?
I'll scale it out. I don't think there's a specific measurement.
Yeah, I don't think so.
On what, on that lot?
On the line.
Well, the, the, the sideline, the longest sideline is sixty-four, one eighty-three, one seventy-nine. So that's two.
So in other words, you got to add all these together to even get to the road.
Right, right.
And so.
And on this end, it's two eighty-eight altogether. There, there's no other number. And thirty. So that's, uh, three hundred.
Yeah. And then, when you're that far, I mean, you're that far even from the road. I mean, I, I, I appreciate the fact that here's that nest.
Right.
And yet they're still saying within a mile and a half of this. We're, we're kind of assuming that when the DEC person spoke about the den.
The whole.
They, they might have. I think, but even still, you, that's relatively close, but I don't know that from, you know, like if somebody's going down the river, there's still quite a distance from the river to any potential structure, so.
And let's not forget that the UDC felt that this project did not require.
Right. So.
Well, I don't think that, that it's substantial, like, like I had stated earlier, that, uh, there is no fixed number as to what that should be.
Mm-hmm.
But I'm going, uh, in percentages, you know, and it's now nowhere near fifty percent of, uh, the three hundred required feet. So, uh, and, uh, so I think it's, it's not substantial at all. Anything else, Steve?
All right, I respectfully disagree.
Really noted.
Okay, whe- whether the requests will have adverse, adverse, physical or environmental effects. I think we, uh, addressed, uh, most of that in the secret, uh, form. All right, uh, we went one step further with, uh, lo- locating, uh, an Eagles Nest, which was talked about initially. And it was initially dismissed because we thought we were well out of that range. And then at the public hearing, uh, that was brought up, so, uh, uh, Mr. Wiggers did his due diligence here and, uh, had his, uh, survey of map it out for us, make it pretty easy to see. Uh, so I think that. so I think that, that aspect of it is minimal. I mean, uh, we could put in conditions that he has to adhere to any D, recommendations concerning the, the eagles or the rattlesnake. Well, you know, because there still could be some small effects. And so uh, no, I don't think this is going to have any major uh, adverse effects, you know, the, like, again, like I said, in the secret, we invested and uh, we thought that everything along those lines is gonna be minimal. If then.
I would agree with that with the subdivision of the property. Um, that might change depending on the size of the house that would be built there. But we're not judging the size of a house, we're, we're, this is a subdivision.
I would say it's, you know, not gonna make that much difference.
In this one, uh, now, uh, whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. In this, in this respect, I think uh, the only way that would be, the, the only alternative is to acquire more profit. Did you ever explore that, Mr. Wiggers?
The property for sale. Nothing, uh, two of my neighbors, Dave Hartley owns.
On one side.
On one side.
And there's workman on the other.
Angry at me because I bought this lot and I didn't let him know that it was for sale. And Nancy Walkman is on the other side of me.
She wanted to buy it.
And she wanted to buy it too, and she's mad at me because I bought it.
And we were friends with Mr. Lang. They, they were his son-in-law and they took over in the door. It was visiting Casa, and I can show you emails where his daughter is saying that Tony, her husband, he was a director of biggest surgical clinic on Long Island, and her father, it's in heaven looking and wants us to have the property. Basically, that's what it is.
So what you're saying is because of the circumstances that occurred.
Yes.
That made it obvious to you that. Well, it made it obvious to you that you couldn't purchase any more property to tell me to those people. To make this, because this is the only alternative. But you don't necessarily have to subdivide the property. You, you want to subdivide it, but you're not, you don't have to because of
It's my option to, to do it.
Just saying, there's no financial pressure that you have to do it because.
And another thing I'd just like to say, you, Steve, that you're talking about, and this was, Hartley said that his grandfather uh, from the train, ran across the river to grab the property. That's a total lie. No, but he's mentioning.
It's, it's okay, because that was mentioned at the public hearing.
But he mentioned now.
Okay, that's fine, but it's, doesn't have any bearing on what we're talking about.
I mean, to, to, to talk to uh, uh, Hartley's, buy the property, they're, like I said, they're angry at me because I didn't let them know what was invited, and that's why this whole thing blew up out of that.
Right, yeah, so that, that, that made you from uh, 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 the conclusion that they weren't gonna sell you any property in order to facilitate.
They, they own, uh, Dave Hartley owns behind me too.
Okay, all right.
But that's not gonna help me on the, on the road.
On the side, right. So, uh, so the finally, that leads to what, this is a difficulty self-created. And I think that's pretty obvious that it is, because you bought this property uh, knowing what the requirements were.
Yeah.
And uh,
No, no, I.
Saying you don't have to subdivide it. I mean, you want to subdivide.
I want to.
Right, yeah, so.
See, originally, um, I've been in there very long, I've been building houses in there.
You're a developer, I understand.
Oh, not a big time developer if I am. The old law was three hundred feet on the road or the river, or the river. That was the law. And the zoning law, they changed it. They had to have five acres and so forth. So I went originally to the planning board. I went to the planning board and I stated to them um, that I wanted to subdivide the property. I had six hundred and twenty feet on the river, I was gonna divide it in the half. Gives it be three hundred, you know, but I didn't have.
You didn't go before the planning board, you spoke to somebody.
I, I went to the pla- I, I submitted my application to the planning board. And um, Ken Bane called me and said to me that I don't require, because they changed the word from or to and.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so.
So then, my, my, my plans all had to be changed.
Right.
I had to go back, so when I did, I, I presented to you three hundred on one lot and the other one short.
But that change in the zoning law occurred way before you purchased the property.
What?
That change in the zoning law.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Absolutely.
Right.
I just know they changed the word end to or.
I don't think there's any question that uh, he self-created this issue, but with every advanced variances, it's not uh, uh, a determinative uh, issue like with use variances. This is, it, it, it has considerations, but it's not the end-all sale.
Right.
Okay. All right, so uh, I think we, we went through all the criteria on this. I think it would be uh, probably prudent to uh, table this until next month.
I agree.
All right, and uh.
I, I think we need to have a full, a full board.
Yeah.
Because three people would be.
Well, we will, we would have to be unanimous.
Right.
So, that's great.
I, I don't have, I don't have the sense that there's like three affirmative votes here to, to grant the variance.
I would agree.
So if, if, so if, like, there were two of you that were of a mind to do it and one was not of a mind to do it, I'd be really hesitant to go start drafting a resolution and come back next month and find out that the two missing members decide that they're against it too. And that'd be a, that'd be a real waste of time.
Let's do it right.
Yeah, let's do it once.
And putting this off until October, does that, is that um, where are we at, sixty-two days?
Well, there, but there's no, unlike, unlike with the subdivision approval, there's no automatic grant of a, of a, of a variance, just because you go beyond the sixty-two, two-day period. I, I mean, all Mr. Wiggers could do is, is he could bring an Article seventy-eight proceeding to get a court to compel you guys to make a decision. I mean, you're not, look, I mean, there'd be a waste of time and money on this part, because you'll get to that point before they, before a court would ever get to hear or decide that.
You, you, do you have a problem with us going to, to our?
He can also consent to the, to the extension.
But there's only three of us here, and what we're saying is we would like to have everybody here to make a decision on this.
I keep referring back to the, the planning board, which I appeared for the planning board, uh, last month.
Right, last month, right.
In the, the bottom of this letter, there were appeared to be thirty lots of less than three hundred feet frontage, with the smallest of forty-five feet. There appear to be four lots over three hundred feet on the inland side of the whole road. The subject of the subdivision being one of them at five hundred and forty feet. I mean, there's lots on there that are forty-five feet that, that are grandfathered, if you say.
There's one lot.
And it'd be thirty lots less than three hundred feet.
Yes.
And a lot of those lots are not built on.
That may be, but I think, I think it would be wrong on our part to assume anything about those existing lots that have, whether they have something on them or not. I think that as a board for us to, to act tonight without a full membership here would, would come back to um, affect you and the board.
Okay.
And everybody else. I mean, I understand.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, I understand you, you've been coming several months now and you're looking for a determination, but to uh, to do it tonight and then have it come back less, less.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum, but all three of us would have to uh, affirmatively would, or, or, yes, say yes or no, not, it can't be two to one.
Would, uh, how about when all of you, how many is on it?
A vote has to be the majority of the board, whether they are present or not. So we have five members on the board.
Yeah.
So for a vote to be a majority, there would have to be, if we were to vote tonight, there would have to be three votes in favor of granting the subdivision variance. For deny.
For deny, right, yes.
Yeah, all right, so it's fine. I've gotten this far. I've done whatever you wanted me to do. I've gone, I've gone.
Yes, and I commend you for that.
Said, you know, I, I really don't feel the change in the character of the neighborhood any. If there are thirty lots less than three hundred feet
The other thing I would, I would like to just point out, Bob, is that, you know, the, the planning board does not have any governance over the zoning board. So, they, you know, they can say they're in favor of this, but it's, it's the zoning board of appeals. Uh.
And more power.
We have, this is, this is why zoning boards of appeal were created. New York State laws made that very specific. There's a total difference between planning boards.
I just, you know, Steve, I just want, don't wanna, uh, uh, this decision be based on a feelings, talks of people, because neither you or other people, they don't know, and they are lying, and I don't want that. Because it is wrong, we're talking, because they, they, they wanna buy the property, it's based on hate. And we have to eliminate that. We have to look what's really, you know, can we do it based on the facts? That if our, the rattlesnake, the, the herpetologist, he contacted Lisa and he's, she, because we, we said, okay, do we have a den? Because you asked me four things, right, remember? And we delivered them, we delivered them. And Lisa answered to basically send the herpetologist, that there's no den on our property. That's what you asked us, and we deliver. And I don't want personal feeling or basically badmouthing like Hartley did. Okay, that, this basically decision will be based on that. That's totally wrong.
All right, the, the decision hasn't been made yet. You're making an assumption.
No, 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 I, I'm not. I am, I am in your hands, like I said. We will deliver whatever you, 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 you will like to, us to deliver, whatever you need to make the decision. We will wait till next month, but I don't want personal feeling being involved in that, not at all.
I didn't, I'm not allowing her to feel if the, or with it either. You know, I was listening to people's testimony.
I mean.
And that's, you know.
Chairman, I, I would just say, I, I contacted the D, the DEC, and they gave me this plan. With the bald eagle. You can do all the restrictions and so forth. And I talked to him about the rattlesnakes. And they said, why are you doing the rattlesnake stuff? I said, because the board, the, the zoning board told me to do it. He said, did you fill the secret form out? The secret form triggers rattlesnake study. That's what he said. And I said, yes, I feel, I didn't, I feel no, no rattlesnakes. Because some character in the back of the room, who for some reason didn't like me, he says, how about rattlesnakes? Do rattlesnake studies too?
Well.
And, and the board went along with that.
No, no, let me stop you right there, because uh, your initial secret application, you marked no.
Yeah.
All right, in reality, it's yes, because it falls in their overlay, the DEC's overlay. Because, like a point I was trying to make to so many other board members that day, was that their overlay is very broad. So they're saying if, if, if there's rattlesnakes in this area.
Yes.
Not, not, not necessarily on your property, but it's something that has to be addressed. That's all the DEC is saying, because, because when you, when you uh, do.
The DEC didn't say that. They were wondering why.
Well, then they should look at their own website.
Mr. Wigger, the EAF mapper. When you pull up, when you pull up, when you pull off that parcel on the DEC's EAF mapper, it specifically says that there's a possibility that there can be timber rattlesnake dens and bald eagles there. And that's why we ask you to provide that determining.
That's all.
It wasn't, it wasn't because someone in the back of the room who doesn't like you said, oh, there has to be rattlesnakes.
Because if you, if you recall, before the public hearing, we, we, we brought this up.
What, rattlesnakes?
Yes, yes, because we told you on
Yes.
At least several points.
Yes, that's true.
I mean, but when it was there, when they attacked us personally on, on everything. It was a personal attack, everything that they said was the relative until they came up with the eagle. And that woman had that eagle's nest on her lot, I heard. I didn't know, it's not on my lot. You know, I didn't figure my form out. There was no eagle on it. No eagle on it, but that eagle's been it for two years.
Yes.
She never reported it. I found out later, it was on, actually.
I found it in this.
She found it at that, told me, is it an eagle's nest on there? I thought it was, you're, you're talking down the Crawford Road, well, my property, my old property. That I have that eagle. I don't know if that eagle moved or it's still there.
I think, I think in the DEC letter, they, they had stated that they were unaware of that.
Yeah.
Until this year.
Yes, to this year.
And, and twice, that woman, uh, Nancy Walkman.
Well, I hired. I'm gonna stop you right now, okay? Let's not talk about, you know, personalities.
Cut the tree down.
All right, let's not talk about personalities. So, uh, I'll make a motion to table this matter to uh, October, what day?
October tenth.
October tenth at seven thirty, second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay, the motion carries.
You know, before you move on, just, Amy, make sure that the minutes reflect that, that the applicant agreed to with the, with the zoning board of appeals to extend the approval, the, to term the decision then.
October tenth.
October tenth, seven thirty.
Yep.
Are you, uh, uh, do you require any more information from me?
I don't think so. Does anybody need anything else from Mr. Wiggins, sir? Pat?
No, sir.
And at, at that meeting, we're, we're going to discuss in the same, and we discussed.
We're, we're gonna discuss it with the, the, the two absent members, hopefully they'll be here. All right, and then, then we could potentially get to a decision that day.
Yes, and the four things, the last time, Steve, remember you told me that, you know, we, we delivered that, and basically, if anything else you needed, I don't.
No, we're good, we're good.
Besides talking about, you know, personal relationship, we don't want it. Unfortunately.
We're, we're not therapists, that we don't talk about.
But you mentioned, that's why I say.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Meeting's closed.